... please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Markovich. Spatelli. Vanez.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Ullaki.
Here.
Higgs. Emerson.
Here.
Henosa.
Here.
Opinker.
Here.
Okay, moving on to reading of minutes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
The motion to accept the minutes is November eighteenth, two thousand and thirteen.
Motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Emerson to accept the minutes. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on accepting of the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes passed. Moving on, approval of claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims, November thirteenth through December four, twenty thirteen, for council meeting, December ninth, twenty thirteen. Beginning with claims number dated eleven eighteen thirteen and ending with claims dated twelve four thirteen. Claim number fifty-six seventy-eight through claim number six zero four four inclusive for a total of six million, six hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. I so move.
Second.
It's motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Henahosa to accept the claims. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on the claims? Clerk Golick, roll call vote.
Hold on. I've moved, um, I've got an amendment.
Okay.
I was just trying to get a claim number, I'm sorry. Uh, claim number six oh four. An addition, I'd like to make an amendment. Six oh four five. The Councilman Higgs for a hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-four cents. Uh, he was playing Santa Claus over the weekend, it was candy for the parade. I so move.
Second.
There's an amendment on the claims, uh, motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Henahosa. Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote on the amendment.
Markovich, yes. Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Ullaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Amended claims, pass nine zero.
President. As amended.
As amended.
Claims as amended.
Claims as amended. Now Clerk Golick.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Ullaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Claims pass nine zero. Moving on to a public hearing, the public hearing is now open. Anyone that would like to speak on thirteen dash fifty-four?
Ordinance dash thirteen fifty-four sponsored by Mark Kalwinski and Daniel Spatelli. An ordinance of the common council of the city of Hammond, Indiana, designating certain areas within the city as an economic revitalization areas for purposes of residential real property tax abatement, citywide housing infill program. Chip.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this issue, please come to the podium. Public hearing is now open. Anybody like to speak? Public hearing is now closed. Moving on to number six, communications. We have any communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
See the communication from the Hammond Sports Hall of Fame, this is your Anthony Higgs. Thank you very much for nominating the candidate for the Hammond Sports Hall of Fame induction consideration. Members of our steering committee will closely consider your nominee. Should he or she not be selected for inter- introduction at our next program, he or she will remain in our file for future induc- induction consideration. Again, thank you very much for your interest and your support in the Hammond Sports Hall of Fame. If you have not visited the Hammond Sports Hall of Fame, introduction display along the wall of the west lobby, wall of the Hammond Center, we cordially invite you to do so. Sincerely, Steering Committee, Hammond Sports Hall of Fame.
Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I had another communication from the Ophelia Steen Center there in desperate need of a computer, and so Debbie was making a copy, I was gonna read it, but I just wanted to acknowledge the, uh, president of the Ophelia Steen, uh, board of directors is here, Ms. Curlin Jackson, so definitely I will try to assist in whatever regards I can. I understand you're in desperate need of a computer.
Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Moving to committee reports.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
Council as a whole will bring out thirteen dash fifty-two and thirteen dash fifty-four.
Any other committee reports? Committee reports is now closed. Moving on to number eight, ordinances, third and final reading.
Ordinance thirteen dash fifty-two sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski. An ordinance authorizing the city controller to transfer funds from one line item to another within various city two thousand and thirteen budgets.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
I move for final passage of thirteen dash fifty-two.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Spatelli for final passage of thirteen fifty-two. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote on thirteen fifty-two.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Ullaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Thirteen fifty-two passes nine zero.
Ordinance thirteen dash fifty-four sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski and Spatelli. An ordinance of the common council of the city of Hammond, Indiana, designating certain areas within the city as an economic revitalization areas for purposes of residential real property tax abatement, citywide housing infill program.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
Move for final passage of thirteen dash fifty-four.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Spatelli for final passage of thirteen fifty-four. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
This ordinance is an update to the original ordinance that is ten plus years old, and in order to add, uh, new addresses to the ordinance, uh, for the chip infill program, we have to put them in and list them in the ordinance, and so that's what we're doing this for today.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion on thirteen fifty-four? Clerk Golick, roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Ullaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Thirteen fifty-four passes nine zero.
President Opinker, that concludes the ordinances for final passage and adoption.
Thank you Clerk Golick. Moving on to number nine, introduction of ordinances.
Ordinance thirteen dash fifty-five sponsored by Councilman Opinker. An ordinance authorizing the city controller to transfer from one line item to another.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henahosa.
I move for first and second reading of thirteen dash fifty-five. Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Henahosa, second by Councilman Higgs. Is there any discussion?
Uh, Mr. President.
Councilman Henahosa.
I'd like to, uh, make an amendment to thirteen dash fifty-five, uh, under, reduce under the first one, general services from twenty-four seven eighty to twenty-two thousand, and the next one, seven thousand, strike that out, uh, under total for thirty thousand five twenty-five, I so move. Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Henahosa, second by Councilman Spatelli to amend the numbers on thirteen fifty-five. Is there any discussion? Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Uh, we had discussion in caucus, and the reason for this change is there seems to be ninety-three hundred dollars that might've got lost from last year to this year, and we're in the process of trying to find out what happened to that, so that's why there's there's this reduction of, our bookkeeper, big bookkeeper, our secretary Debbie Jimenez had the figures and so forth and all that, but all of a sudden now there's a difference of ninety-three hundred dollars, so that's why we're making the reduction. This is basically going for promotional count, where, um, a lot of people in Hammond are in need at the time, it's Christmas time, and that's where this money's going, but we're looking into the fact that what happened to the ninety-three hundred dollars from last year that, uh, for some reason didn't get transferred or encumbered or whatever, so that's what we're doing here tonight.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Amended version, first and second passes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henahosa.
Isn't that the amendment that's voted on?
Yes.
No, no, but you gotta do the first and second.
That was the first and second. Yeah, it was. Now you gotta do.
So that was the amendment.
Yes.
It's been voted on first and second, but the vote was just on the amendment, on the amendment, the vote has not been. No, no, you still have to do the first and second, right?
Right. You did the first and second right now, right?
We already did the first and second.
No, you didn't. No, we didn't, we just made the amendment. So we need to vote on the first and second.
As amended.
Clerk Golick, roll call vote on the first and second as amended.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Ullaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. First and second as amended, pass nine zero.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henahosa.
Yeah, I'd like to suspend, uh, suspend the rules so we can pass, uh, thirteen dash fifty-five, final passage. Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Henahosa, second by Councilman Higgs to suspend the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Rules are suspended.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henahosa.
Yeah, I'd like to move for, uh, final passage of thirteen dash fifty-five. Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Henahosa, second by Councilman Higgs for final passage of thirteen fifty-five. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote on final passage of thirteen fifty-five.
Thirteen fifty-five sponsored by, uh, Councilman Opinker. An ordinance authorizing the city controller to transfer from one line item to another. Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Ullaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Thirteen fifty-five passes nine zero.
President Opinker, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you Clerk Golick.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henahosa.
Yeah, I'd like, uh, make a motion to go back to the regular order of business.
It's a motion by Councilman Henahosa, second by Councilman Higgs, go back to regular order of business. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Back to regular order of business. Moving on to number ten, resolutions.
Item A, Resolution thirteen R thirty-eight sponsored by Councilman Opinker. A resolution opposing the South Shore Convention and Visitors Authority's decision to divert Lake County tax dollars to outside its jurisdiction.
Mr. President.
Councilman, uh, Higgs.
I'd like to be added as a sponsor of this particular resolution, and I move that we pass this Resolution thirteen R thirty-eight, I so move.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Henahosa for final passage of Resolution thirteen R thirty-eight. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I feel as though that it, it's very much needed that this particular, um, event remain in our area, Lake County. I don't feel it's fair that it would be removed from this area. There are a number of businesses, not just in my district, but throughout the city that participate and hire people to work these particular events, and I feel it's totally unfair to the taxpayers as well as the residents of my great city to divert this and take it to another county. And I applaud the mayor's effort in speaking to this particular issue.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
I make a motion that the whole council should be put on this, uh, resolution.
Second.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Emerson to add everybody as a sponsor on this resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Um, I do agree with Councilman Higgs, uh, that the airshow should be, however, in Lake County, uh, not just Hammond. Uh, it needs to be in Lake County. Uh, the dollars generated that, that support, uh, the South Shore Convention and Visitors Authority are generated in Lake County. If we do not support and cheer for Lake County, who is going to? Um, uh, I, I really think that we, that the South Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau should focus on Lake County. Um, as of late, there were funds that were given to support events outside of Lake County. As I said before, if, if we don't cheer for Lake County, uh, nobody else is, so I am in full support of this resolution.
Thank you Councilwoman. Clerk Golick, could you read, uh, thirteen R thirty-eight in its entirety?
Whereas the South Shore Convention and Visitors Authority is a publicly funded entity in Lake County, Indiana, with the responsibility to promote and establish tourism, visitation, and interest in Lake County, Indiana, and whereas funding for the authority is generated from taxes generated in Lake County for the betterment of Lake County, and whereas the South Shore Convention and Visitors Authority has announced plans to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to hold an airshow in central Newton County, an area not represented by the Visitors Authority, and whereas the event does not benefit the residents and businesses of Lake County, Indiana, and whereas those dollars could be better spent supporting, developing, and expanding the many fine events that are held each year in Lake County, Indiana. Now therefore, may it be resolved, the Hammond City Council hereby states its opposition, dismay, and disagreement with the authority's decision to divert funds from Lake County, and calls on the authority and its governing board to reevaluate this very misguided decision, and to instead increase its support of existing events in Lake County, Indiana.
Thank you Clerk Golick. Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Ullaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes, resolution passes nine zero.
Item B, Resolution thirteen R thirty-nine sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski and Spatelli. A resolution of the common council of the city of Hammond, Indiana regarding a preliminary economic revitalization area resolution for the city housing infill program.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
Move for passage of thirteen R dash thirty-nine.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Spatelli for final passes of thirteen R thirty-nine. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
This resolution and the next one coming are, uh, part of the process to complete the ordinance that we approved earlier today regarding the chip infill program.
Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Ullaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Thirteen R thirty-nine passes nine zero.
Item C. Resolution thirteen R forty sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski and Spatelli. A resolution of the common council of the city of Hammond, Indiana regarding a confirmatory economic revitalization area resolution for the citywide housing infill program.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
Move for passage of thirteen dash forty.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Spatelli for final passes of thirteen R forty. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski. Ullaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Thirteen R forty passes nine zero.
Item D, Resolution thirteen R forty-one sponsored by Councilman Higgs. A resolution to reappoint Gregory Myricks to the Hammond Redevelopment Commission.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move for final passage of Resolution thirteen R forty-one, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Henahosa. Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Ullaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Thirteen R forty-one passes nine zero.
Item E, Resolution thirteen R forty-two sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski. A resolution to reappoint Miriam Soto Presley to the Hammond Redevelopment Commission.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
Move for passage of thirteen R dash forty-two.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Spatelli for final passage of thirteen R forty-two. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Ullaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Resolution passes nine zero.
President Opinker, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you Clerk Golick. Moving on to new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Uh, as I do at every meeting, uh, I'd like to read a list of the upcoming community and crime watch meetings in the area. Uh, coming up on Thursday, December twelfth, six thirty P M., the Whiting Roberts Stale Crime Watch will meet at Calumet College. On Monday, December sixteenth, Columbia Crime Watch will meet at Columbia School, six thirty P M. On Tuesday, December seventeenth, the East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet at the Ophelia Steen Center at six thirty. And on Wednesday, December eighteenth, the Lafayette Neighborhood Watch will meet at Lafayette School at six thirty P M. And that is how change happens, one person, one gesture, one moment at a time. Thank you.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
Just wanna take a moment, uh, thank everybody that came out to the Hammond Christmas Parade, uh, holiday parade. Um, I wanna thank Michelle Truchany, she did a great job, uh, it was a little chilly, but, uh, everybody, uh, seemed to have a good time. I had plenty of candy left over, and, uh, wish everyone happy holidays. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I would be remiss if I didn't say semi-condolences to our judge. He lost his sister over, uh, a week ago, I think it was, and I didn't get the news until after the, uh, the, the services, but I certainly wanna, uh, send my condolences to his family, as well as to the Andrews family, where Minister Andrews passed away this past week, and he's gonna be funeralized on Thursday, so I send my condolences to those two families.
Oh, myself, I'd like, uh, I'd like a letter to sent, a letter to be sent to, uh, Espirus Badastados, uh, send the council a copy of their budget and their salaries.
Is that a form of motion?
Yes, a form of motion.
So move.
You should've stepped down and donated. Okay, but normally what happens when you're the president, you have to relinquish the seat and do things, okay?
Get her's motion on the floor. All those in favor of that letter being sent?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any other unfinished business?
Like I said, I'm, on behalf of my house, myself and the whole city council, I'd like to wish everybody a very merry Christmas and a, and a happy, safe new year, and, um, other than that, uh, any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Just a reminder, we are not meeting December twenty-third, that meeting has been canceled. So in case some people wanna show up, that meeting's been canceled, December twenty-third.
That's correct. Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Final item on the agenda. Public expression, Mr. Alvin Cheeks.
Heard that ticker. Uh, Alvin Cheeks, Anna Block of Merrill Street. First of all, this has been a tough year. We've had thirty-two funerals of thirty-two good people, including my mother, so I want you guys to enjoy the holidays. That's my favorite, my mother's favorite color, blue, so it's kinda deep. Um, first of all, I went to a U S Marshall Conference, and they said that if we just increase our city lights to two-hundred-and-fifty watts, our average city light pole carries carries a hundred watt above, so if we just increase it to two fifty, that would deter